Turn the microphone on. July 20th, 2021 at 9:30 a.m. We're going to have our invocation by Counselor Hoyt and Pledge Allegiance by Counselor Parker. So if everyone could please stand. Good morning, Counselor Hoyt. You doing all right this morning, sir? Thank you. Everyone please stand.
Let me say good morning to all of you. I need to preach from this. Sounds good coming back to you. Let us bow heads. Eternal God, our Father, Lord, we thank you this morning, Lord, as we have been so purposed, Lord, to be a part of the new day, a new horizon. God, we ask now that you bless this meeting, bless those who are assembled here, to include the mayor and this council and to the department heads and even those citizens of this city. We ask now, Lord, that you continue to guide us and direct us in what we do. Father God, we pray and say thank you, Lord, for you have brought us through another storm. And we know that life is full of vicissitudes and we just want to say thank you, Lord, that you have kept us. All that we have had to have endured this season, God, you have been faithful to us. Now, Lord, we ask that you guide us and direct us as we continue to dispense our duties as public officials and that we may always put the citizen before us and that we empower them in ways that you will be pleasing with. It is in Jesus' matchless name I pray. Let us all say amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Clark. How you doing?
How are you?
Good. You doing okay?
All right. Let's see. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Schmittman.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Councilmember Woods. Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Good morning, you're here.
President Park.
Good morning. Okay. Good morning, Chief. How you doing?
This is the Council President.
Good morning, Chief. How you doing?
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, Chief Sparks. How are you doing?
Well, Mr. President.
Good. Do we need to?
Madam Pro Tem, members of the council, members of the public, there's no mayor's report today.
Okay. Thank you. What we're going to do, what we're going, what we're, what we're going to do is we're going to go to, go through the consent agenda and then after we go through the consent agenda, we'll hear from Dr. Hicks from the Health Department. So.
We're going to provide an opportunity for the public to speak.
We always do. We were just trying to get through the consent agenda and get to Dr. Hicks so he can get in and get back over to the Health Department. He agreed to come this morning. We just want to get him in and out. That was part of our conversation this morning was to get him here, but also he has other meetings over at the Health Department. So, Mr. Clark.
Consent agenda starts on page two. We have items one, two, and three on consent. Skip over to page 33. Items four, five, and six are on consent. Page 34, we have items seven, eight, nine, and 10 on consent. Page 35, we have items 11, 12, and 13 on consent. Page 36, we have items 14, 15, and 16 on consent. Page 37, we have items 17, 18, and 19 on consent. Page 38, items 20, 21, 22, and 24 are on consent. Counsel, please note that item number 23 is requested to be withdrawn by planning and during your purging. It's item 23. Page 39, we have items 25, 26, 27, and 28 on consent. Page 40, we have items 29, 30, 31, and 32 on consent. Page 41, we have items 33, 34, and 35 on consent. Page 42, we have items 36, 37, and 38 on consent. Please note that on item number 36, the vendor should be, is that Ferrara Fire Apparatus, Chicago Illinois, F-E-R-R-A-R-A, instead of Southland International Trucks Incorporated. That's the vendor that should be in that spot on 36. Page 43, we have items 39, 40, 41, 4, and 42. And on item 42, we have some language change. Is it 42, Ms. D? Correction of the vendor, I'm sorry. Is it just long, loose forward? I'm sorry. On item 42, it's still listed long, loose forward. I'll have to go in the office right quick and get that information. I got an email from Mr. Roberts. Did you get, get that? You didn't get that? Can you sit for me right quick? And before you pass the consent, I'll come back.
Okay. Well, Mr. Fraser's checking that. At 42. Then on page 44, we have items 43, 44, 45, 46, and 47. On page 45, we have items 48 and 49. On your addendum, we have items 54, 56, and 57. And that completes the consent agenda.
Okay. I guess we'll wait. We'll, well, we'll see and then we'll come back to Mr. Lee before we finish up. Are there any additions or items to be taken off? Counselor Woods, Counselor Williams, President Pro Tem? Dr. Quinn? I'm just working my way around. Everybody's good. All right, Mr. Fraser. Sure. Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, because I couldn't find them.
They were sent, they were sent yesterday.
I mean, I saw them really, but I just couldn't pick all of them up.
So what are we removing, Mr. President? Addenda consent. So that's 57. 57. Oh, 57, 56, 54.
Mr. President, you calling on each one of us.
I was just trying to, I know I had to go to Mr. Fraser because he had an item.
It, we're fine.
So we're fine on that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So he was part of our rotation. So we're down, I think we left to you, Counselor Hoyt, as far as.
Thank you. Yeah, if we could pull item 16. And item 27. Off consent. That's on page.
39. Okay.
Yeah, 39.
What are the items again, please?
I'm sorry. Item 16.
And also.
An item.
39. No, item 20.
27.
27 on page 39.
Right. And on page 40, item 30.
Okay.
Think that's all that I have. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. All right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. So, ready?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Williams, President Pro Tem Alexander. Voting should be open now.
A vote yes. It's not on there, but.
Councilmember Hilliard and Hoyt. So he looks like he got it.
Okay. All right. Consent agenda is approved. Need a motion. We're going to suspend the rules for our presentations to hear from Dr. Hicks with the Jefferson County Health Department.
No move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Good morning, Dr. Hicks. How are you?
Good morning. Good morning, President Parker and fellow counselors. I am here on behalf of Dr. Mark Wilson, our county health officer, to present you all with a COVID-19 pandemic update. I'm going to give you a kind of a high level view of the big picture was happening in our county and then I will focus on some Birmingham specific things. And then certainly I'm open to field any questions that you may have. So as of this morning, since this pandemic has ravished our community, we have had 82,320 cases of COVID-19 in our county. And that equates to 1,581 deaths unfortunately thus far. Some of the troubling stats that we have right now is in our county, on a daily basis, we're now averaging 75 COVID cases per day. If you go back a month ago, we were averaging 13 cases per day. So that's a more than five-fold increase in the number of daily cases of COVID-19. Our positivity rate unfortunately has gone up. It's currently 6.2%. Three weeks ago, our positivity rate was 1.8%. The significance about the positivity rate is when your positivity rate exceeds 5% in a community, that tells you that there's a lot more virus circulating and there needs to be more identification of those cases through testing, contact tracing, and case investigation. Most of the cases unfortunately are individuals that are age 50 or younger. And that's mainly due to the fact that people that are 50 and younger, generally speaking in our community, are not fully vaccinated. When you compare to the population of 65 and older, which we have at least, at least 70% of our population that's 65 and older is vaccinated. In Jefferson County, 36% of our residents are fully vaccinated. 45% have received at least one dose. So there certainly is an opportunity because there are some people that get the first dose and they're not returning for the second dose. When you look at numbers throughout the whole state and we saw this report from the Hospital Association, 94% of all hospitalized patients, these are people that are hospitalized due to COVID-19, were not vaccinated. State Health Department recently told us that 96% of all the deaths due to COVID-19 in Alabama are people that are not fully vaccinated. The CDC has estimates that in Jefferson County, about 20% of our population is hesitant to get vaccinated. And we see that across the deep south and other parts of the United States. We've been doing a lot of efforts to promote vaccinations. I want to highlight a few things that are particular to the city of Birmingham. We partnered with the city to provide vaccinations at the airport. 19,903 doses were administered. We believe that that, that about 10,737 individuals availed themselves to the vaccination. So they came for the first dose and then oftentimes came back for the second dose. That's why you see those numbers the way they are. We also have collaborated with some other medical providers to offer vaccinations to have more deeper penetration into the communities. For one example, we've partnered with a group called Meds Plus Consulting. They're the group that they've gone to churches, schools, public utility businesses. They also went to the Birmingham Crossplex. As of the last report we got from them, they've provided over 4,4,500 doses of COVID vaccine in Birmingham. Our local health department, as you are aware, we have multiple locations, but our flagship locations in the city of Birmingham. And we also had a National Guard 10-member strike team that was provided to us that is no longer with us, but in partnership with the National Guard and just from our own individual efforts, what we did at our locations here in Birmingham, we administered, we've to date administered 20,555 doses of COVID-19 vaccine. I'll give you examples of some of the locations that we've gone to. Senior housing, that was a key target back in March, and particularly 50%, we wanted to target low-income senior housing in the city. You've heard press about what was happening in North Birmingham and there was at one point a lack of Alabama Regional Medical Services getting access to vaccine. Before that even hit the news, we were already working with them behind the scenes and we gave them the first allocation of doses that they can get the ball rolling in that community because we know that was a community that needed vaccinations. We've gone to boarding homes in the city, multiple churches, nursing homes, health fairs, local businesses, breweries, sporting events. We were at the Birmingham Barons game offering vaccinations. We've gone to a couple of mobile home communities. We've gone to the Department of Youth Services, the YMCA, and the county jail. That's just to name a few of how we've tried to get, penetrate deeper into the community. We know that transportation has been a barrier. With some of the grant funding that we've received, we were fortunate to offer to any of our citizens, if they needed a ride to a vaccination site, that would be at no cost to them. And that was through agreements with Max Transit and Yellow Cab. And that's still ongoing as we speak. Now, this is not our particular effort, but in the city schools, I know there's a lot of conversation about what's happening to make sure our youth get prepared to go back. Again, I talked about Alabama Regional Medical Services. You know that they have, they partner with the school board, you know, and the Department of Education to offer vaccines. They've sent us their reports. I'm going to give you some of their numbers. So they administered 551 vaccines at the seven high schools in the city of Birmingham. I can tell you, they went to Winona, two different occasions. The first occasion, 47 vaccines administered. Second occasion, 61. Huffman had 85 doses. Jackson Owen, 57. Woodlawn, 58. Carver, 50. Ramsey, 86. Parker, 107. Another thing that we did that particularly impacted the cities at this point, we were looking at equity issues and we know that, and everybody is aware of, communities of color have been disproportionately affected by this pandemic with hospitalizations in deaths in the, in the community. We had an initiative where we partnered with a group called Clergy United, which is a group of African-American clergy. We estimate that directly we were able to vaccinate 300 clergy. And we estimate at least 75% of all those clergy are actually, have their religious facilities within the city limits. Indirectly, we estimate about 150 to 200 people were all benefited from that vaccination. And we also partnered with them with a public relations campaign. We partnered with another group and they came with a campaign called Faith Forward. When, if you recall, several weeks ago, we were promoting this large community vaccination site in Bessemer. And in preparation for that, when we were meeting with FEMA officials, they were asking about some of the efforts we've done to target certain communities. We talked about the faith community and this particular Faith Forward initiative and that brought the attention of some of the higher-up officials in the Department of Homeland Security. And they really took a liking to the effort that the Faith Forward campaign did. That also has been pushed up to on the state level as a model of how people can share their stories and how vaccinations transcend with what they feel is, what their duties are from a faith perspective. Now, we have spent a considerable amount of resources in our public outreach. And this is multiple platforms. So text messaging, digital marketing, community engagement campaigns. We've had a couple of campaigns. One was called Finish Strong Until COVID Is Gone. I've Done My Research is another one. Your Date Is Coming. And then COVID Ain't It, Get The Vaccine And Stay Lit. Now, so through this pandemic, there's been a lot of different ways we've tried to get creative of marketing and get people interested. We estimate we've participated in 664 interviews on multiple stations, including CBS 42, Fox 6, ABC 3340, NBC 13, Birmingham Times, Birmingham Watch, AL.com, WAGG. We've had 2,887 social media posts related to the pandemic. As far as our community and virtual presentations, we estimate we've participated in 41 of those, including town hall sessions sponsored by you, the city council, and the mayor's office respectively. We've put a lot of ads on Facebook, YouTube. We've had targeted ads to certain groups that we know where people are gathering at certain social events. We, we made sure we did particular targeting there. We've even had advertisement with airplanes flying over the Magic City Classic, the Regent's Golf Classic, and the Indy Grand Prix of Alabama. We've had ads on radio stations, 94.9 The V, 107.7, 98.7 Kiss, 95.7 Jams, 99.5, and La Hefa, the Hispanic radio station. We've ran ads on public transportation, the MAX buses. You've seen on the side of those buses at times, there's been billboards in the community. Now, that's some of the things we've done already. We have some things that are upcoming. One of the things we're partnering with you all on is Safe Summer Series Initiative. We're going to continue to encourage our community to be safe so we can return to a sense of normalcy, whatever that looks like. We also have participated in the Magic City Showcase Combine, and that's allowing high school athletes a chance to show off their scout skills and still promote safe, safety in vaccinations. We're also preparing in the future for the Magic City Classic in October 2021. I mentioned earlier about the Clergy United group. That's a group that we did that Faith Forward campaign. They're interested in potentially partnering with us to do another campaign similar to target youth in the community. With that being said, the last thing I would just want to point out is there's a lot of information that we're hearing about these variant strains. There's many variant strains out there. The first one we had got the attention was the Alpha strain, that the ones came out of the United Kingdom. The Alpha strain in our community in Jefferson County represents 92% of all the variants that are identified. 3% of all the variants that are identified are the quote-unquote Delta variant strain. So it's, but it's picking up steam. And the issue with that one, as you all know, is that it is highly contagious. And so I think what was happening right now, and we're starting to see this in real time unfortunately, is that people are starting to become sick. They're, they tend to be younger. And the hospitals are, rates are starting to go up a little bit. Now, this is not the way, like it was in December, January. So we're not close there. So we're not trying to purport that the situation is in dire straits as it is there. But the trajectory is troubling. This, every week, we're seeing a doubling of the cases of COVID-19 as being identified. We don't even know the ones that aren't identified because we know some people may not avail themselves to getting tested. We know there's a stigma at times about people either getting COVID-19 or having to get quarantined or isolated. So this is a big challenge and we're running out of some of our options and we're looking forward to any ideas that the city may have to help guide the next approach. So with that being said, I'll conclude my comments and I'll, I'll open the floor to any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. Very thorough presentation. And, uh, any questions? I guess Counselor Hoyt, you want to start off or?
I certainly want to say thank you this morning. I think it is a thorough report, but that's, that's the kind of person you are. So I expect that out of you and, but I appreciate the work that you all have done. I don't have any ideas now other than, you know, we need to be at every game, every athletic opening, and whatever we do, trying to get folks fascinated. I just think we just got to exalt our, our options, you know? And it's unfortunate that due to education, that we are not getting people to, to really take this serious. You know, there's still folks out, you know, that are cavalier about COVID and the effects of COVID. And so, but I do think that there's always room for us to, to improve our efforts. And I would just say that I don't know if the school's going to do athletics this fall. I don't know how you can survive not doing athletics because, uh, we, you know, we need to be healthy, you know, doing the exercise. I think I need to be out there on that field myself. And, but I just think we need to take advantage. I think they got some concerts or something that's coming up. We need to be out there, you know, providing those vaccinations for those individuals. But I appreciate the work that you and Dr. Wilson has done and continue to do. So thank you so much for being here this morning.
You're welcome, Counselor.
Thank you. Counselor Hilliard, go.
First of all, I'd like to say good morning and, and thank you. Thank you for the service that the Health Department is doing. And I see that you all have just been so diligently in being involved with the county and our city and, and our state in getting things pushed through. I, I just realize, and I've always, the young people just aren't, aren't listening. They still feel like that they can't, they're not getting this virus. And, and I just noticed just from watching national TV that it's starting to spread to younger and younger people. And, and, and now the hospital rates are going up. Now, remind me again, tell me again, where are we in our hospital rates? Are we, have we gone back up?
It's going, it's gone up slightly. So it's nothing dramatic at this point, but we're just starting to see it go up. So the concern is that we always see the number of cases rise before the hospitalizations start to rise and there's some, oftentimes like a two-week lag. So I think that we can anticipate that the hospitalizations are going to keep on climbing. Now, to the credit to our phenomenal hospitals here, that as you can see during a pandemic, they were able to modify their operations to handle the, the burden, but it was a tremendous burden. I mean, hopefully it doesn't get, as I said earlier, to the way it was in, you know, December and January. But I certainly think that the hospitals have learned how to adapt and a significant amount of their healthcare workers have been vaccinated so that helps protect the workforce ideally. So right now, the hospitalizations, you know, are not dramatically increased at this point, but it may go up really soon.
Well, I would suspect, because I think everyone in this room can realize that people are starting to mingle again and get back out and really, you know, you know, feel somewhat protected. Now, is it the case that I've heard that even if you've had both of your shots, you still can contract the virus? Is that not correct?
You're correct.
You know, you, it may not kill you, but, but you can contract it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So even at that point, you know, and I thought about it because when I was driving in this morning, I could hear it on public radio and I thought, heck, I forgot my mask. So, you know, I, I know it's, it's time to mask up. Again, wouldn't you say that?
You know, this is controversial and it's debatable. And so I, this is how.
But you would be more protected if you had on a mask.
So, so let's talk about the mask. It's a, it's a good point. So primarily when we wear a mask, it protects others from us, right? So what if I'm asymptomatic carrier? I have no idea I have COVID-19. If I put the mask on, I happen to cough or sneeze, hopefully some of that fabric is going to catch some of the particles, not all of them. But that'll help to some degree.
So it minimizes, it minimizes the actual effect. So if I, I have on my mask now, it, it just. So, if I have on my mask now, it just minimizes. It doesn't mean it's going to actually stop it.
You're right.
But it does help some. It would be better with it on, without it.
So, what we say is, if you're unvaccinated, you should be wearing a mask, particularly indoors. The issue, I think, comes in, and maybe this is what you're wondering about, is how far does that go, right? So, beyond the unvaccinated person. The challenge we have is that for people that are unvaccinated, you have no idea what someone's vaccination status. We're not going to ask someone their vaccination status. And so, at some point, then, does the city council decide, do you have a broader blanket because things are getting out of control? And I think people can argue, when do you pull the trigger on doing something like that? So, it has, it can be helpful, but the most helpful thing is to get more people vaccinated. That's the number-one option. Last year, before we had safe and effective vaccines available to us, we did all we could do with what we had. So, we said, social distance, wear masks, cough etiquette, sanitation. And that did, it helped to some degree, but only so much. Even with that, remember, the hospitalizations were going up in December and January, right? Now, we have all-time record lows of influenza, RSV. So, those measures helped really good with those particular viruses. To some degree, COVID, the vaccine is where it needs to go to. So, you know, for us, we still want to push, get vaccinated, get vaccinated. That is the ultimate tool that you need. And if people decide not to get vaccinated, then the question is, do you go to your B plan? And the B plan certainly may be, when do we talk about masking and things like that? So, I think that we can debate when that threshold is, but masking is not as good as vaccinations for sure, but it's better than nothing.
Well, I see that some colleges are now not allowing people to, students to return back to college unless they're vaccinated, you know? And I don't know whether it would be extreme and not allow people to come back to work unless they're vaccinated, you know? I mean, because everybody loses, the businesses lose money if you can't come to work, you know? So, I mean, things need to be really talked about, and I really appreciate this conversation, but I just wanted to bring it to the forefront, that the more we talk about it, the more we want people around us that we love and that we care about to mask up, to actually get vaccinated, and really protect the ones around them. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Other, oh, can I, let me go to Counselor, but then I'll come to you, Dr. Quinn.
I was unfortunate, I was unfortunate to him.
Cut your microphone.
Spoken with a young man the other day who said he was sure he had COVID, but he didn't get tested because he couldn't afford to miss work. And he was a bartender. Now, what does that tell you about the level of selfishness in our society? The level, well, I call it the Alabama ignorance factor, the AIF. And we have the Alabama ignorance factor in Alabama. We're the worst. We can't even point at Mississippi and say that they are below us because we are the absolute bottom of the barrel. You know, I just, it just, I couldn't afford to miss work, so I didn't get tested. But I can't breathe, but I'm going to work.
Well...
And I'm sure not wearing a mask, because after all, a bartender with a mask on, I mean, what would people think? So, I'm very frustrated with all this. I think it is wonderful that you are here today. I think it is wonderful, all the things the Health Department has tried to do, but you've still got the Alabama ignorance factor. And I'm just beginning to think it's never going anywhere. We'll always be last because of that. And I'm just, I'm just beside myself. I'm wearing a mask. I don't care whether you say it's a good idea or not. I'm vaccinated, but I take care of my 98-year-old mother, and I'm not going to be the one who kills her, okay? So, all these mixed messages we're getting. One health expert says, wear a mask. One says, oh, you don't really have to if you're vaccinated. Well, you know, to me, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So, thank you for being here, though.
You're welcome. I was just going to comment, you reminded me of something, a situation that happened at the very end of last year. One of my former patients had called to the Health Department and just wanted to talk to me, and I was no longer the primary care provider, but I decided to reach out to see what this person needed. And I called this gentleman, and he has extreme difficulty breathing over the phone. He's wheezing as I'm talking to him. So, as he gets out about every two words or such, he hear this audible wheezing. And he said, I've been out of my medicine, my inhalers, for now over a month, okay? And so, as I'm trying to understand what's going on, I said, you need to go, you know, quickly to the hospital, like, right now. He said, I don't have a car. I said, okay, well, can you find someone that possibly can give you a ride? I have no one. He lives in a trailer park community. He said, he didn't want to leave out of the trailer park community because in the trailer was his mother, his elderly mother, and she's the only one that she has. If he left her, then who would take care of her? So, he said, and I'm also scared of this COVID thing that's out there. So, he didn't want to leave because he was scared to get COVID, bring it back to mom, but even if he wanted to leave, he didn't have a car. He was underinsured. Then I said, well, who else do you have? Well, the next trailer has someone, but that person broke their back in their bedroom. They can't move at all. I said, do you have any family? There's nobody that lives in this county. They're far away. So, I get our social worker on the phone call. We're calling the hospital system and trying to figure out how to coordinate this. After an hour and a half of working on this, we were able to get him convinced to go in. That's one person that I happened to engage with. How many of these thousands of other people in our community that are out there that they're making these gut-wrenching decisions? So, they're saying, I'm getting, there's a lot of disinformation out there. So, you're thinking, this official says this, this person says this. What do I believe? Do I believe it's COVID? Is it a hoax or not? Do they inject me with a, some kind of tracking device? You know? But do I have gainful employment? If I leave and go out, do I lose my job or not? So, I think that there's, it's such a complex thing to dissect of why people just make decisions they make. I think that the disinformation out there blurs things up and makes it even harder for people to make those decisions. But there's still gut-wrenching decisions that people have to make just to survive here, and they're looking for us to provide the resources and help them navigate through this maze. And so, I think that I don't have the answers of why some people make decisions. I have some speculation, and there's polling about why certain things happen. But I do think that, to your point, counselor, is there's been confusion. There's been one, some party says this, and one person says that, and it changes sometimes as we learn new information. And then there's misinformation that's purposely wrong that's inserted into the conversation. And then someone has to make the decision on their own, what do I do? But right now, I can see what's in front of me. Right now, it's my survival. And some people have made the choice that getting that paycheck tomorrow seems to be more important than perhaps exposing my coworkers to illness or taking off from work. So, I think that the ways, some people make decisions may be different from what I do, but I think we have to keep on giving the facts from trusted resources and try to take out all the noise and then provide the backup resources to help people navigate through the system.
Okay. Counselor, but that's your, okay, Dr. Quinn?
Yes. First question is, is for those people who have been vaccinated, who are becoming infected and becoming symptomatic, tell me a little bit about the symptoms and how severe that typically is.
Yeah. So, typically, so when any of us get vaccinated or fully vaccinated, it doesn't get the risk to zero, but if you look at the, when the data was presented about how effective these vaccines are, it was, it prevents you from getting sick from COVID, being hospitalized, or hopefully dying from COVID. Doesn't mean that you may not get infected, but so that means the symptoms will be a lot milder if you get it. We see the similar phenomenon with influenza. So, if you get a flu vaccine, you still may get the flu, but it's going to be a milder course. So, it's particularly important, people that have compromised immune systems, diabetes, heart disease, lung disease, kidney disease, to get vaccinated. So, even if you have a quote-unquote breakthrough case, you're likely to fare a lot better than if you weren't vaccinated at all.
Okay, thank you. Next question is, with regard to vaccination availability, most of the vaccine clinics have been between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Are we making vaccine available between 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM for those people who may, you know, work during the day? And that additional challenge of getting there during the normal working hours is a barrier for them. So, what's available after 5:00 PM?
Yeah, good question. So, when we were, when these vaccine sites popped up in the community and you started seeing these big, large vaccine sites, typically, they were doing normal business hours. I can tell you that the one I was more intimately involved in was that site in Bessemer, which no longer is running right now. And one of the issues was, we wanted to make sure that certain days, people can go till 6:00 PM. We have Saturday hours and Sunday hours. Now, that site and all these other large community sites have now gone away, right? So, people are limited to the options of either when your local pharmacy is open. So, if you have a 24-hour pharmacy, I would encourage people to go there. But when you talk about community vaccinations, there'll be pop-up sites that happen from time to time. So, I do know that, for example, this is some of the groups that we've partnered with in the past. I know that they have gone on Sundays out into certain communities to offer vaccinations. The one, Alabama Regional Medical Services, they do almost a standing Saturday hours. But I haven't heard of anyone going late into the night at this point. I know at Legion Field, happened to offer vaccines, and I think at one point, I think President Parker, till 10:00 PM, at least sometimes. But that was very limited in those hours. When we hear from our partners, when they've tried to extend the hours, they look at the uptake and to see, are you having a lot of people come? And at least from our experience, oftentimes, we would have people come very first thing in the morning because they want to get in and out, the very first of the afternoon, or the late, say, 4:00, 5:00 PM. When we were going to 6:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays, it wasn't a drove of people that you'd anticipate. But certainly, I think, beyond local pharmacies, if there's any opportunities, that's one thing. But sometimes, when you're working with partners, and they may say, I can set up shop, and we have, some have told us, I've been there for Saturday, and I've advertised, and hardly anyone's showing up anymore. So, then they're making a business decision, do I spend thousands, thousands of dollars if one person shows up? And some of them can't keep that as a business model? So, it's a balancing act. But you're right, access is an important thing, whether not it's days of operation, hours of operation. But no one has tried late, late night at this point, as far as I know.
Yeah. And finally, I just wanted to throw this out there. I have no idea whether or not this is feasible, but it occurs to me that we are, you know, just coming out of the 2020 census. We have a large number of people in the community who were trained as census workers, who went door-to-door, and many, on many occasions, they had to go to the same doors multiple times in order to interact with people who were living in, at that home. And it seems to me that if the powers that be, you know, would recognize the opportunity that's available through those census workers, through those people who were previously census workers, that there, that is a resource in our community that could potentially be utilized to reach some of these folks who may be holding out.
I appreciate, I will note that, I will tell you that, you know, at the Health Department, we actually had a conversation yesterday about, we've been balancing our internal operations and making sure that we're providing all the normal services to the community, but we also have the obligation to provide vaccinations. And how do you balance? Because you can't, if you borrow from the left hand, you don't want the right hand to be, you know, you know, overbalanced one way or the other. So, having a strike team that's dedicated strictly to doing those type of outreach efforts is something that we're going to put resources in already. If the city has any ideas, you know, similar to what you just mentioned, we absolutely would love to collaborate and partner and discuss those. We know that there's a lot of grant dollars that's been made available to do things like this. And there are some local entities in Birmingham that the State Health Department granted funds to independently. So, there's a lot of things to use in community health workers, you know, census workers, people that know how to engage. And it has to be done in a really meaningful and thoughtful way because you also don't want to seem pushy and try to, you just want to educate and let people know about resources, but not try to sell somebody a product or convince them or get in their face. And that's, I think, when people have gotten in trouble, other parts of the country, where people have a lot of criticism, is what's the role of you knocking on my door versus letting me make my decision myself? So, we had to, as long as it's planned properly, I think it potentially could work, but we had to be really careful and thoughtful about how we do it.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Hicks, thank you for being here, and thank you on behalf of all of Jefferson County for not only the work that you've done, but the entire Health Department. Y'all have been amazing. You know, we've seen different levels of response throughout the U.S. from different health departments, and y'all's has been second to none. So, thank, sincerely, thank you, pretty much on behalf of all of Jefferson County for the work that you guys have done. You know, Mr. O'Quinn, you brought up a good point about vaccine availability, and I just wanted to remind the public that if you are in a traditional job where you work eight to five, all of the local Walmarts in the Birmingham metro area allow you to schedule a vaccine appointment after work, I think, up until 7:00 o'clock, and also on Saturdays and Sundays for the entire day, which is, which was a big win, I think, for us to be able to have that availability. And one thing unique that Walmart is doing is now that the Pfizer vaccine is available for ages 12 and up, you can go on walmart.com and specify, I'd like to get my child vaccinated or 12 and up, or I'm an adult and I would like to be vaccinated. So, they can guide you to the site where there's either the Pfizer vaccine if it's a child, or maybe it's the Moderna if it's adult. All that's on walmart.com under the pharmacy tab, and the first little thing under the pharmacy tab is COVID vaccination. So, that's a huge resource. It's available throughout the Birmingham metro on all areas, in all areas of town at all of our Walmarts. So, I encourage the public to check that out if they have not been vaccinated yet, or if they've been vaccinated and their child has not been vaccinated, that's 12 and older. That's a very good resource. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. And thank you, Counselor Williams, for your leadership, working with Walmart to bring the resources to the community.
Happy to know. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Counselor Woods?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate you being here today. I think it actually sparked a little bit of a conversation, I think, that we maybe haven't had enough of, and specifically, some of the disparities as it relates to the decisions that people are having to make. And so, you know, people are making those real decisions as far as, can I actually afford to miss a paycheck? And rolling the dice when it comes to whether or not, you know, do I have COVID? Am I sick? Am I too sick to go to work? And we talk really about nationally, and even locally specifically, but people live in paycheck to paycheck, and really, if you miss a, if you miss a check, like, what are those real repercussions that are going to be? And so, it's not pretty, but we have not, just over the course of this last year, things have really slowed down. So, we haven't had as many of the demands and meetings and places to be as we typically would. So, that's created more time to really take in, read, watch, look at some of the things going on across the country, and some of those real struggles that present themselves to people every day. And so, you know, where a lot of us are fortunate, if we don't feel good, if we're sick, we can just take a sick day. A lot of jobs don't give sick days or vacation days, and if you don't show up physically, you don't get paid. And so, those are some of the real decisions and difficulties that some people were having to make. But I kind of agree with you on another point you were making as far as, is how do we, you know, get more people vaccinated, kind of the lack of people being vaccinated? You know, it didn't sound like, you know, people, there's not a lot of optimism that, you know, people are going to maybe shift what they're doing, and we're going to see bigger numbers getting vaccinated? And so, kind of want to get your feedback on, you know, because I'm kind of coming And so I kind of want to get your feedback on, you know, because I'm kind of come from more of an economics background, so I don't like to make people do things, but I'm all in favor of trying to incentivize people to do things. And so really looking at, what have you seen that has worked? And then what are other things that we can do to potentially incentivize people to get vaccinated?
Well, all right, so let's talk about incentives. The, from my perspective and what I've seen, a lot of the small incentives are marginal effectiveness, right? You know, we've tried that in some of the vaccine sites we've done. So a $250 kind of scholarship, or a gift card to, you know, a certain, you know, sporting apparel. And it hasn't been as much as you would think it would be. And I've heard of other efforts where free tickets to this concert and things like that. I think that may move needle on some people. I think there's a few people on the fence where that may sway them. But I will tell you, if you look at national statistics, from the Kaiser Family Foundation, you go back from December only to the present, the percentage of Americans that are unwilling to get vaccinated, have no desire to get vaccinated, has not changed in this country despite all of this. It's remained about 13%. So no matter what, anything that's happened, that 13% hasn't moved. Now, there's movement in other people that may be on the fence, or they may be waiting to see if someone else's experiences with the vaccination. So you may have some movement there. Now, and I think people have heard of these big lotteries that's happened, you know, in Ohio, they reported some, some numbers that are very impressive. But then I think that what you're seeing is, but over time, that was a sort lived burst. And then the question is, is it really moving the needle in a big way? And I think that the jury's still out on those, so I can't, I can't say. I, I think the incentives only will work for certain people, but then you have to make the incentive large enough to move that person. And I think that there's certain incentives that no matter what you do, some people are saying, I don't care what you try to present to me, I'm not going to do that. So how much, I guess more, as an analogy, how much more juice can you squeeze out of the orange of those people that are maybe on the fence? And I'm not sure we can move the people that have dug their heels in and said, I'm not getting vaccinated no matter what you do. So, so I think it's a mixed picture across the country. There has been successes, and there has been some stuff that's just maybe not so. So I don't have the answer for what else to, to do. You know, so you have a carrot approach and a stick approach. And the carrots are those incentives, and the stick approach are when you start talking about, does a business say that you have to in order to work here? And I think that's part of the national conversation now, is are we at a point where they have to start using that kind of stick approach? Because we've tried the carrots and the carrots aren't working. And I, and I don't know what else beyond that, because we've tried all the messaging we can. But I think from, you talk about an economic perspective, in order for a business to be viable, you need your workers. That's your most valuable asset. And so this is going to be a tough choice, but a business not to decide what they, how they want to protect. And you're going to start seeing, at least you're seeing this in the country, in the hospital systems, healthcare providers, are starting to mandate and are testing the legal, you know, what they legally can or can't not do. And I also anticipate that when the vaccine becomes fully approved, beyond emergency authorization, I think you're going to see a wave of other employers starting to now dip their toe into that approach, where you have to be vaccinated or else this, or you may not be able to receive this service. And I think that's going to be a shift that we may see. I'm not saying, I don't think that's going to be in Alabama as much initially, but I think across the country, you're going to start seeing a wave at time, you know, over time.
Yeah, and there may be room to, to potentially incentivize businesses. I think I was, I was reading about the NFL model, and they are, they're not, it's not mandatory to get vaccinated. But if you're not, you have to get to the facility like three hours before time to get tested, and wait in your car, and then come in once you're cleared. And so, yeah, so I mean, like I said, we're just trying to take in as much as we can because I don't, I don't know that there's anything we can say, you know, that's going to further convince anybody that has, has not made that choice at this point. And so unfortunately, the only time I'm seeing people change their minds at this point is when they have a family member get hospitalized, or, you know, God forbid, a death. And, and then they're kind of opening their eyes and making that decision. But, yeah, so we're all there. As I, like I said, we've, we've been able to really, and I appreciate all the work you've put in, really, over the last, since last March, and so almost 18 months that you've been readily available anytime called upon. So I do want to commend you for that, and thank you, Mr. President, for the floor.
Yes, sir. Okay, all right. Dr. Hicks, you have, yes, Bill Skid. Do you have any closing remarks? We appreciate everything. Sorry, we've taken up your time. But I think this is very helpful as it relates to just educating the community on where we are at this point and, you know, a pathway forward, so.
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you, President Parker, Counsel, and the Mayor for giving us the opportunity to present this information. We're always available to come and present any updates. And even if it's not in a formal setting, certainly, you know, you can contact the Health Department, and we can discuss these issues and bounce off ideas. And we're absolutely always open to partnerships with the city. We recognize that the city of Birmingham is, where has, as Birmingham moves, so does the county. And so we understand that you're strategically a key partner in how do we respond to COVID-19.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Hopefully, we didn't keep you too long. We appreciate the report, the update on it. All right, we go back to the, our agenda. Mr. Clark.
Should be at item 16. On page 36. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a foreign trade zone operator agreement with the city of Birmingham Mercedes-Benz USA LLC, under which the city will grant Mercedes-Benz USA the right to utilize a subzone site known as Subzone 98, which is located at 11146 Will Walker Road, Vance, Alabama 35490, is a foreign trade zone subzone for a term of five years to automatically renew for the successive five-year terms. And Mercedes-Benz will pay annual operating fees to the city or its administrator for foreign, for routine foreign trade zone operations. Motion, please.
Good morning. Any presentation? Okay, we're here for questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Well, I took liberty to pull this off because I wanted to know where we were with the trading. I guess the status that we have with, I forget the.
World Trade.
Yeah, the World Trade, yeah. So we're just trying to see where we are, and, and I guess this is how significant it is. And I know this is something we do every so often with companies like Mercedes-Benz, what have you. But I was just trying to see where we are with that designation because I know that that helps us in our efforts to recruit not only Mercedes-Benz, but those who supply Mercedes-Benz. So if we can get an update.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Counselor, to your, your question about the World Trade designation, I think we have been in conversations between our IEO department and Counselor Hillier's Economic Development Division Committee, I'm sorry, to try and further that advancement of the World Trade Center. I think we have been in contact before with, I think it's Mr. Kirk Atkinson with ADI. So I think that conversation is still being fleshed out between the administration, the committee, and Mr. Atkinson. So we're, we're still visually trying to work on that because that was a question that Mr. Hillier had during the budget talks.
Yeah, because it, it seems that this is a small order, if you will. This is not something that we cannot imagine because, you know, there are other foreign manufacturers that are here that certainly, you know, having a destination would help us in our efforts to even go beyond what we already experienced in terms of economics in the city and even in this region. Because I think what we do here also affects the region to include outside of Jefferson County, quite frankly. So it just seems to me that that's what we ought to be doing. And, you know, we keep kicking it down the road, and I'm saying, let's go on and do it because we know it's, if it's, if we ain't never seen it, and we see it right today, and we need to do that. I mean, we are the largest city for right now, at least that's what I'm reading and what have you. But, but we want to certainly maximize our efforts. And so I just took liberty, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. President.
That'll be a conversation we need to be having, and need to move on that, really.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Wow, you know, I want to say to our brilliant and most distinguished colleague, that was an excellent point. And I didn't realize where you were coming from, but you are 100% right. I, I wish I could take credit for coming up with the World Trade Center, but I can't. It, it came about before the council that was previously here, but it was a very wise decision. I don't think, I know for a fact that we haven't gotten what we wanted to get, but we have been in talks with Economic Development, and I believe that is starting to resonate. And, and hopefully, we can bring it to fruition and take our rightful place among all of the other World Trade Centers around the country that are really networking and building trade. This is a perfect opportunity to do it due to the fact of the climate we're in. So I, I think that's, that's awesome. I would love to see it happen. Hopefully, we've worked through all of the real hard kinks, and now we can put some real numbers behind it. I think with our World Trade Center, our port, we, we should work extremely harder for our port because where there are large World Trade Centers, the ports are doing well. We have opportunity that we have not even began to really explore. And hopefully, over the last couple of years, well, four years, that I've, I've been Chair of Economic Development, and I know you've been there too, so you understand as well, is that we're at a point where now is a time, a great time to take action and, and move things around. With that said, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay, all right.
My last comment, Mr. President. You know, I know that we're in a new budget year, and we have dollars for professional services and what have you. I think this is an excellent opportunity for the council to really move on this. For us to consider.
I, I think there's conversations between Counselor Hillier Committee and with, with the mayor and his team. So I think of that will play out. If I'm not mistaken, I think that's, I think there's some ongoing conversations first. So let's, I think, allow that to play out. I think there's been some funding requests made already. Am I correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, there's, so I'm just saying. So we're just waiting on that to, to, to play out, Counselor Hoyt.
Very good.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on this item here? Okay, Mr. Clark, we're ready to vote.
Williams is out. All right, they voted you.
Okay, all right, that item passes.
All right.
Next item.
Twenty-three, we're drawn. Here we go over to item 27, which is on page 39. A resolution accepting a unit price bid of CP Construction LLC, 90424th Street, Southwest Birmingham, in the amount of $311,110.80 for Bellevue Heights Gateway, this being the lowest and best bid submitted, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with CP Construction LLC. And substantially, the form contained within the bid documents and in accordance with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract, now to see the appropriation. Motion.
Move down, second.
Okay.
Item is before you.
Counselor Hoyt, you need a moment, or?
Well, I guess I should have done this before now. But no, I wanted to commend the mayor for this project. We've been waiting on it a long time. And, and it looks like it's happening, and so we're looking forward. If you know anything about Bellevue Heights, this is right off of Avenue I. And we have these trucks, transfer trucks, that are parking there. And it's such a, it's such, it's so disheartening to see that this is what you see when you enter a community that I still think is still very much well-kept. I'm not far from that. My house is probably two, three blocks from, from this entryway. And, and it's been an eyesore. And it's been a eyesore for a long time. And to see that this is happening, I think is really wonderful. And so I want to commend the mayor and his staff that we are moving forward with this, with this item. It's, it's well overdue, welcome, and overdue, so I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other ones? Let Mr. Clark.
Mr. President, I just wanted to ask, what is the, how is this being funded? Is this a bond project, or a neighborhood project, or what?
It is. We allocated this money probably five or six years ago. It's just coming to fruition. There were right-of-ways that had to be purchased, and, and so it was, you know, the money's been earmarked and, and really allocated for this.
So it's a bond project?
I don't know if it's a bond project or not. I thought we, it came out of capital.
It's, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
It's a bond?
It's, it's a combination of bond projects and neighborhood funding.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
It's just been so long, so I'm just glad.
Oh, I understand. Listen, I'm, I can't remember where half of the money's coming from. It's been so long. Five or 10 years, five or 10 years goes by and you can't remember anymore.
When I see it's breaking ground, I'm almost speaking tongues.
Mr. Clark? Ready to vote.
Is there going to be a statue of Stephen Hoyt at this?
No, ma'am. Not have anything to throw at. Go have anything to throw at.
All right. Next item.
Should be item 30, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of, the bid renewal of Airgas USA LLC Birmingham for the supply of medical-grade oxygen that's needed at unit price zone filed in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year for the fire department, which will begin the final year of the current bid. Motion, please.
Move down, second.
Okay, item is before us. Counselor Hoyt. This is with the Airgas USA.
Yeah, I just wanted them to explain what we're doing here.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Hoyt, this is just a bid renewal of a previous bid that was awarded to this company in 2019. So basically, it's just renewing the current bid so they can hold the current pricing and the, the units that we use for this, for the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Department.
Very good.
All right, Mr. Clark, I think we're, I think we're ready for vote. All right, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Item 50, page 45. A resolution setting a public hearing August 17, 2021 to consider the adoption of a resolution attempting to the vacation of 324 square feet of airspace along 27th Street South, along Fifth Avenue South, and along 28th Street, between Third Avenue South and Fourth Avenue South, on behalf of Fifth South Apartments LLC owners, so that develop, construct balconies on the proposed apartment building, case number S U B 2021-29.
Motion.
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote. All right, the public hearing is set for August seventeenth.
All right, item fifty-one, a resolution setting a public hearing August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one to consider the adoption of a resolution extending to the vacation of five thousand and one square feet of the alley that is located parallel to and between Twenty-second Street South and Arlington Avenue South and perpendicular to and between Red Mountain Expressway and Twenty-third Street South on behalf of Arlington Redevelopment LLC owner so that the owner can consolidate property, case number S U B two thousand and twenty-one dash thirty-seven.
Motion.
Second.
We're ready for vote. Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item.
Item fifty-two. A resolution setting a public hearing August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number Z A C two thousand and twenty-one dash two to change own district boundaries from C two general commercial district to Q I one light manufacturing district filed by C Randall Minor Esquire, representing the owner, Daniel Payne LLC for property located at two twenty-five Daniel Payne Drive situated in northeast quarter of section fourteen, township seventeen South Range Street West, Birmingham.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we're ready. Start.
Okay. All right.
Okay, that item passes.
Item fifty-three. A resolution setting a public hearing August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number Z A C two thousand and twenty-one dash eight to change own district boundaries from Q R five contingency multiple dwelling district and C B two contingency general business district to Q C two general commercial district in order to construct a new convenience store filed by Jimmy Plott. It was in the owner David Bowers. So it was this for the property located at thirty twenty twelfth Avenue North and situated in northeast quarter of section twenty-five township seventeen South Range Street West, Birmingham.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we're ready. The vote, Mr. Clark? Okay, uh, item passes. Uh, that's a public hearing set for August seventeenth.
Item fifty-four. A resolution, mini resolution number twenty-three forty-nine dash twenty adopted by the council December eighth, two thousand and twenty. Approving the application of Santos Coffee Uptown LLC for a restaurant retail liquor license to be used at Santos Coffee Uptown, twenty-two twenty-one Richard Avenue Junior Boulevard North Suite B, Birmingham to change the name and address to Santos Coffee two, twenty-two twenty-one Richard Avenue Junior Boulevard North, Birmingham.
Move the item. Second.
Item for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the one who asked for it to be taken off.
Okay, I was gonna let, Counsel Williams kinda tell us what.
He can do that, but he asked if I had any questions about the item. And I just wanted to say that I don't have any questions. I just simply think that if we're going to add addendum items at every meeting, we need to make sure that the public gets to hear what the addendum items are because otherwise they have no idea. Since it's not published, it makes it look like we're up to something. So it seems to me that at least having them read through is a good idea.
Okay, all right.
Um, this item, Mr. President, this is simply something that we voted on before. There, the applicant changed their name from Santos Coffee Uptown to Santos Coffee and left off the word uptown, so it's just a name change.
Okay, all right.
From Boogie the Com- Common?
Do what?
Boogie the Common.
I don't know. Pass or I don't know.
All right, Mr. Clark, we're ready.
Vote should be up. Counselor Hoyt?
Okay, all right.
Their vote should be up.
Okay, thank you.
Now, item fifty-five. A resolution authorized the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with B Grace Media LLC pursuant to the amendment seventy seventy-two of the Alabama Constitution of nineteen oh one under which B G M will develop, coordinate, and facilitate an annual music and movie festival project beginning June two thousand and twenty-one through September two thousand and twenty-one for compensation in total, event costing in amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. B G M and the city of Birmingham desire to enter into an agreement under the terms of which the events will be held in Birmingham, Alabama Parks according to the requirement stated in amendment number seven seventy-two. The city has cause to be published a notice in the Birmingham News on July the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one concerning the proposed action of the Birmingham City Council to approve the agreement with B Grace Media LLC with respect to the events at the council meeting on July the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Move that item.
All right, item is a force. Questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I wanted to ask first, what is the funding source for this? I, I couldn't find it and I thought maybe I just missed it, but can somebody just tell me?
President? I, I can speak to the funding source. It's coming out of the three dollar, three dollar lodging tax.
Lodging tax?
Yes, ma'am. Remember the council approved a lodging surcharge. There was a three dollar surcharge on all hotel stays. And remember we have the sports and entertainment recruiting fund that was created from the council's recommendation of that.
Okay, so it's the sports and entertainment money, not lodging? I mean, it's not. Okay.
It's a line item within that fund.
Okay, and then, um, it says June to September, and today is the twentieth of July. Are we paying for past events that occurred in June and July? Is that legal?
Yeah, I wanna see this one.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, Yolanda Lawson, Office of City Attorney. We are allowed to contract for services that are ongoing if we rat- ratify the contract after the services have began, as long as the services have not been completed. It's a violation of section sixty-eight of the Constitution to ratify a contract where the services have been completed. However, if the services have began and not been completed at the time that the council considers the item, we are allowed to ratify those contracts.
Okay, so we're not paying for any events that have already been, have already occurred. We're paying for things that we're planning to do.
Well, I'm not sure of how many events may have occurred or what work may have been completed at this point because I'm not involved in that portion of the process. However, if services have began, we are allowed to pay for those services as long as the contract is ongoing. So this contract, the services are to be completed no later than September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, so have, I mean, I, I, obviously you don't know the answer. Have we already performed any of these events?
I'll, I'll have to yield to the council administration.
I think, uh, Mr. McDaniel.
Counselor Abbott?
Lot of finger pointing going on here.
Oh, no, it's, it's.
The finger is on you, Mr. McDaniel.
It's okay. Uh, as it relates to, uh, council members, council members cannot engage vendors for services. The employees of the city must do that work. To my knowledge, no services have been provided to date to any council for any event.
Okay, but these aren't events for counselors because that would look like we were doing campaign events. This is.
Everything we do.
So.
I think in, uh.
So.
And Mr. Dr. Hicks, excuse me, uh, responds to the council on COVID activities. I think he specifically mentioned summer concert series. His comments in terms of the activities aligns with the opening of the city. Again, as I said in the budget and finance meeting last week, I don't speak, speak for Mayor Woodfin. He can speak for himself, but the mayor has made it clear from the constituents he's talked with, council members, that it's his intent, along with the council, to reopen the city. These activities allow for such, and it's not the only activities that align with reopening the city. There are others.
Okay, so, so to me, the timing of this just does not look good. We're all running for reelection except Counselor Hoyt and.
Praise God.
It just, yeah, well. So it just seems to me the timing, it just makes us look like we are funding things with public money during campaign season. So it just doesn't make me comfortable. That's just a personal thing, so.
All right, um, I'm, I'm gonna go on.
And, and that's it for me because I'm.
Okay. Counselor Hoyt?
Yeah, um, Attorney Lawson. Because I, I wanna understand this because I think the issue is to be consistent in what we do as a council. And so how does this work when we obligate discretionary monies? And because there are, there are a lot of fiscal agents that we use on a continuing basis and yet we have to start over every time. And, you know, these folks are still providing services for the various councils who have their, have a fiscal agent. And so I'm just trying to see what's the dichotomy, if you will, and what you presented today and what we experience as counselors.
If, if I understand your question correctly, Counselor Hoyt, I think it's important to remember that each contract is to be treated individually because they're individual services. So while we make contract with a, a vendor for various services that are provided to the city, it's important to remember that each contract stands alone. So when we start getting into the physical agency portion of it, we have to remember that that physical agency may be treated differently depending on the services to be provided to the city.
So brilliant. And, um, and I don't think I've said this in public, but congratulations on being elected a city council person in Hewitt Town. Is that right?
No.
There's a distinct difference in that. But, but certainly I wanna say that you've always represented us well and now you get to represent us in another city too, so that's just wonderful. But I wanted to say that publicly because I have not had an opportunity to do that because we've been social distancing and all that good stuff. So I really appreciate the work that you are doing and making a difference in this region, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, thank you so much. Now, when I was first approached on this item, we were to, uh, contribute our own discretionary with respect to this. And so now that we are pulling it from the entertainment because I didn't think we needed to pull a lot of discretionary to do this. So, and the purpose was, uh, Counsel Abbott was that we would have these events in the various districts. Now, my question is, are we still running down that same track?
Yes, sir, and the park board has, um, will be providing the parks. And so there'll be a collaboration with the park board as well to provide, you know, parks throughout the city to make sure that there's, there's equity.
My apologies. I couldn't hear what you said.
Me either. She's out of order.
I'm not gonna get into that. Yeah, but there, make sure there's, there's true equity in working with the park board and with Director Bennett.
I'm just trying to, trying to see from a logistics standpoint if in fact my staff need to be coordinating with Enslid Park on, on the event there because, um, that's the only park that we have, really.
That, that'll be a, the park board will be working with everybody.
So I need to assign somebody to that because I wanna make sure that we're communicating and that we, and then we can pick a date in, in which we can do that.
Right, and, and the park board has already gone ahead and voted to make the parks available. You know what I mean? So we don't, you know, if you want a date, on this date, you don't have to wait for the park board to approve it. It might be three weeks before the park board meets again. So they're kinda, in, in working, just kinda said, well, you know, partnership, if the park is available on that Sunday, go ahead and move forward without having, it having to go back to the park board. So they're trying to be forward-thinking as well and just work through it.
All right, well then we'll be coordinated.
Yes, sir.
So.
Okay, all right, with that, um, Mr. Clark? I think we're ready.
I got you.
Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark?
Um, should be item fifty-six. A resolution proving the following advanced expense accounts. Ed Fields, Chief Strategist, Mayor's Office, Washington District of Columbia, one thousand one hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents, July the twenty-seventh, through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, to attend the World Games July two thousand and twenty-two meeting. John Hilliard, Councilor, City Council, Bentonville, Arkansas, two thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents, October the seventeenth, through the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, to attend the International Mountain Bicycle Association Trail Labs, two thousand and twenty-one. Connie Horn, Records Management, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-two cents, July the twenty-second through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, to attend the World Games July twenty-second meeting, July two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Kevin Kent Jones, Committee Assistant, City Council, Bentonville, Arkansas, two thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents, October the seventeenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, to attend the International Mountain Bicycle Association Trail Labs, two thousand and twenty-one. Don Lupo, Mayor's Administrative Assistant, Mayor's Office, Washington DC, one thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-one cents, July the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, to attend the World Games July two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Chad Mitchell, Deputy Chief of Operations, Mayor's Office, Washington DC, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents, July the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, to attend the World Games July the two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Madara O'Quinn, Councilor, City Council, Bentonville, Arkansas, one thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-three cents, October the seventeenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, to attend the International Mountain Bicycle Association Trail Labs, two thousand and twenty-one.
Move the item.
Second.
Uh, trying to make sure we got one more. Yeah, let's, go ahead and vote. All right, before I call it, I just want, Mr. Clark, there was meetings I have in Montgomery with the health, the state health office. Is that on there? I think it was.
I don't see, this is advanced.
Okay, no, it was for advanced. It was for today, I think through Thursday.
You could just ask and we, we can approve it.
Okay, we can just add that to it, uh, for Montgomery, to attend meetings in Montgomery regarding COVID-nineteen initiatives. So we can just add that one to it.
Second, are you making that a motion?
Yes, uh-huh, that's to add to item fifty-six. Okay, we're ready to vote with that being included. Mr. Clark?
Just declare, I mean, we didn't declare it until.
All right, uh, the item passes.
Okay, item fifty-seven.
Okay.
A resolution proving the advanced expense council city employees.
Move that item. Second.
Okay. That's ready to vote.
Councilmember Hoyt, Councilmember Abbott.
Okay.
Councilmember Hoyt.
All right, that item passes.
Next slide.
Next item, Mr. Clark?
Old and new business.
Okay, uh, Counselor Hoyt, you said, any suspended rules for two speakers?
Yes.
All right.
Rules to suspend rules to hear him speak.
Second.
I'm in favor. Let it be known by saying I.
All right.
All opposed.
Good morning, how you doing? Good morning. Good morning, you doing okay?
I'm doing fine, really, I'm here to talk about the Function and the Junction, I'm not even here to talk politics, I want to talk about some fun stuff, um, that's going on, um, Tuskgee, the Function and the Junction will be this coming Saturday from eleven to seven PM, from, I'm sorry, from eleven to eight, and I'm asking to encourage you all to participate in it, because it's an event that's been going on for thirty-five years, and I know in the past administrations, um, they funded, the city funded the program, and the last two administrations removed, removed actually, but even now still, thanks to the mayor and some of the rest of you, we still is getting things that we need to have, that makes it successful, public works, you know, stuff like that. And I also would like the person to say, hey, you know, it's election time, come out and be supportive, you know, of the people who put you in these seats. You know, I've reached out to several of your offices, uh, office individually, asking, you know, for your support, because one of the things we are trying to do out there is that we want to fund a five hundred dollar scholarship to the, some city schools or students, um, and we was asking you individually, would you all not only provide the scholarship, but to come out and present the scholarship? You know, you got a lot of good talent here in Birmingham in these schools, and my daughter, she just graduated from Carver High School, Mr. Hill, um, school, and she's going to TSU in Tennessee, and, you know, and it's a feel good for a parent that didn't even finish school to have two that then graduated and going off to college, you know, I'm a proud momma, she's in the band, and yet these schools, kids are amazing, so, you know, again, I'm gonna ask for your support of the function, you know, to come out and be a part of it, and possibly even support some students, take a couple of kids at the schools, you know, and support them, you know, with a five hundred dollar a piece, maybe two scholarships for these kids, because we got so much talent here, especially in your district, Mr. Hill, it's a lot of talent around here, and like I said, I'm here for support of the Function and the Junction, a thirty-five year event, you all, and I know it might not mean a lot to some people, but being a new member to that organization, it's amazing the things that went on in the history that's in there, and I'm one of the ones, I'm gonna advocate that you all, or either the next administration, put it back in the budget, and let it continue to be a thriving success of Birmingham. It's in Enslid, a great, great district, it's coming up, Enslid's really growing, so, you know, I wouldn't, don't want to see it removed from Enslid, I'd like to see it stay where it is, and, you know, and be, let it be what it can be, thirty-five years, so that means that it must mean something. So again, I'm asking you all to support the event, to come out, and maybe talk about your platform, or what you plan to offer for the next four years, you know, because as, on this side, we really want to hear, you know, and cut the naysayers out from what they say you say, and come out and present it yourself. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Oops, you okay? Next speaker.
William Muhammad, four-eleven, Loraine Street, Birmingham, Alabama. Along with my friend, Ms. Tammy, I have to say that I did come to talk about politics. In fact, if I had had the opportunity to write down what my subject was gonna be, it would be no more plantation politics. Uh, I want to say that, City Council, you are nominated and placed on the Birmingham Waterworks Board, a man named Mr. Larry Ward, who was considered by many to be a good Democrat. I just want to let you know, the good Democrat has voted with the suburban Republicans on every issue except for one, and I want to say to you, you have a responsibility to the communities that you supposed to represent for the actions of those who you appoint to the boards of the city. Larry Ward just delivered the largest bond refinance in the history of the BWWB, nearly a half a billion dollars, to his former employee, Raymond James. Raymond James was able to make two million dollars commission off of that bond refinance. We had announced to everyone that when I was on the board, we made history by having the head, the lead of a bond deal to be a black man. That black man lost eight hundred thousand dollars with Larry Ward coming to the Birmingham Waterworks Board, the good Democrat. In fact, he said to some of the other board members that he would give him thirty percent, so I guess we back to giving the minority share, and so that black man lost eight hundred thousand dollars for his firm, and we also have an appointment by the mayor with the corporation of, Mr. Chris Rice, with the corporation of Mr. Ward, and the three suburban Republicans that canceled the contract of a black businessman from Birmingham who had been a businessman here for twenty-five years, costing him to lose two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. That vote was three suburban Republicans, one good white Democrat, and one, I guess, a black man, that votes together for the interests of the suburban Republicans. So I just want to end by saying, I saw a vacant lot that had a sign of a council member on it, and it says, "She Works For You," and it was next to a house that was dilapidated, and I called my friends and said that these people who are out here putting out signs, they must don't pay attention to where they're putting them, you put it next to a dilapidated house and then had a sign that says, "She Works For You," but I made a mistake, I came back by that house and it was occupied, it looked dilapidated, but it was occupied, but still it was a bad message that put up a council sign saying, "She Works For You." The three suburban Republicans, with the help of the good Democrat and Mr. Chris Rice, now control the Birmingham Waterworks Board, and you all are responsible. Thank you.
All right, uh, we're gonna go now to old and new business, Council Woods. You gonna start off on your old and?
I wanted to respond to this.
Just do it in, oh.
Go ahead.
Council Woods, we just take it up on your, on your, yeah, old and new business.
Thank you, Mr. President. Huffman Neighborhood Meeting will be July twenty-sixth at seven PM, that's gonna be next Monday. Also, District One Budget Meeting will be held virtually, virtually tonight at six PM, if you're interested in registering, visit www.bhmdistrictone.com to register, and also we'll be having a movie in the park on, on July twenty-fifth, Coming to America Two, so invite everybody out. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. This Saturday, July the twenty-fourth, at ten o'clock AM, Faith Chapel will be hosting a food giveaway at the Faith Chapel location, one hundred Mike Moore Boulevard, so we want everyone to attend that. Tonight, we will have Tammy Coffin, TC Consulting Services, join our weekly virtual town hall meeting for a mental health awareness and mental health resources, and an upcoming annual bookbag giveaway to be July the thirty-first. If you would like to be informed of all of this, please be a part of our town hall, virtual town hall meeting tonight, you can dial five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine, five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine, at seven o'clock PM, it's District Nine time, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. President, today we will be having a in-person public safety meeting, three thirty, in these chambers. Southeast Lake Neighborhood Association will be meeting virtually this Monday, the twenty-sixth, at six PM. Crestwood South Neighborhood Association will also be meeting virtually this upcoming Monday at six thirty PM. Huffman, as Council Woods just mentioned, will be in-person at Cornerstone at seven o'clock. We have a quick board vacancy announcement, we're announcing for public safety, the seat for Jefferson County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Authority, as well as the Special Care Facilities Authority, all interested applicants should submit their resumes, attention to Ms. India Bailey, District Two Office, Birmingham City Council, seven-ten North Twentieth Street, Birmingham, Alabama, three-five-two-zero-three, or you can email us at india.bailey@birminghamal.gov. All resumes should be received by five PM on Thursday, July the twenty-ninth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, I wanted to say congratulations to the CAB officers that were elected last night, Mr. Coleman and Ms. Spencer and Ms. Reynolds were all re-elected to their position, so look forward to continuing to work with you guys. We have neighborhood meetings this week, Central City is virtual tomorrow night at six PM, you have to register first, see their website to get that done, Five Point South is meeting tomorrow night as well, at six PM, that is an in-person meeting, and Graymont is doing a conference call meeting on Wednesday night at four-thirty, as usual, if you need any of the contact information for those meetings, please, please feel free to call my office. And then finally, I just want to say thank you again to Mr. Ed Tocelli, and the work that he is doing to restore and renovate the American Red Cross Building downtown on Third Avenue North and Twenty-third Street, that building has been vacant for twenty years, and the project will create a hundred and eighty units of workforce housing in the city center, and one of the things that I think is most commendable about that project is that there are several Tuskegee construction students who are actively engaged in working on that project, and gaining skills that will help them in the future, hands-on skills, not only just on the construction project, but also in some collaborative efforts with the Birmingham Library and their mobile unit, so just want to say thank you again for everyone who's involved in that project and bringing that to fruition. That concludes my remarks.
All right. Thank you. Council Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President, the next budget and finance meeting will be held on July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, at three-thirty PM, submissions are due on July twenty-first by twelve PM, and that is tomorrow, there are no exceptions, so please get your information in, in a complete and thorough form. Tonight, at six o'clock, at the Highlands United Methodist Church, the Five Point South Neighborhood will hold an in-person meeting for the first time in about a, at least a year and a half, and they have changed locations from the Library to the Highlands United Methodist Church, because the church has a lot of space to spread out so that people won't be sitting right next to each other, so the neighborhood is going to experiment with different dates and times of their meetings until they settle on one that the most people like, so for tonight, it's at six o'clock at, at the Highlands United Methodist Church. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Smith?
Good morning. First, I would like to welcome to the Neighborhood Build Up Tisville, I'm thankful Council Hillier allowed us to have Build Up, and we actually have a new community school in the same building, a Wake Community School, they deal with sports training, and they're a private school, they have repurposed the old commercial print shop and turned it into a school off of Sixth Avenue. District Six has a new bank, you guys, we have Cadence Bank that is come, that is actually at the Heritage Town Center, and they are open for business, and then also we had another new business that comes to the Heritage Town Center, is, their names are Young Entrepreneur Pioneers, is to help with marketing and networking for young entrepreneurs that are millennials. I know, right? More than Conquerors is having their drive-through, Respect Rally this Saturday at twelve to one on campus, they'll be having bookbag at school supplies, so make sure to see me there, we will, we are still announcing the vacancy on the Land Bank Authority, Stormwater Appeals Board, and Solid Waste Authority Boards, please forward your resume to me at crystal-smitherman@birminghamal.gov, nominations will close August fifteenth. Also, this is in Council Quinn's district, Hyah Beauty Hair Salon is having their grand opening ribbon cutting of the shop's new location at twenty-twenty-five First Avenue North, Suite one-on-one, the owner is Darius Peace, they will have food, drinks, and you can schedule an appointment on-site, and that will be from twelve to four PM. I will see Council O'Quinn tomorrow on the phone for Graymont Neighborhood Meeting, and both of you all, Council Abbott and Quinn, tonight for Five Point South. Lastly, District Six is looking good, and we are the new, one of the new growth front tiers for the city of Birmingham, we support the mayor's effort with the Sixth Avenue and Tuskegee Avenue corridors, thank you, President Parker.
Thank you.
Council Smith, I wanted to commend you on the street improvement project that's happening over in north Tisville, I saw, seen some of the pictures, and look forward to going out and checking that out, so I think that's fantastic that, what's happening over there.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, sir, I was not gonna speak unless you recognized me, but anyway. Well, first of all, I want to say, I want to wish all of you well on your reelection, and that's not political, that's just, you know, speaking from the heart, I have enjoyed over the years, and so, but I want to say I wish you all well, and I want to thank that Council Smith is a veteran, she's not a newbie, because the stuff she's doing over there, you know, it'd take a seasoned politician to do that, and, you know, got a bank in your community, that speaks volumes to me, and, and we should have other banks wanting to open up in our community, mostly African-American community, that's what, that's the real challenge, you know, having access to capital, and that's the only way our community's gonna change, and so I would hope that all of you would approach Cadence, and these other banks that have not commonly shown up in, in our communities, that they need to do so, and I just think it's wonderful, that's commendable of Cadence to do that, and so they're setting the bar for a lot of us, and so we appreciate that. I wanted to say this, I wasn't here when we put Larry Ward on the board, but if I had been here, I would not have voted for him, he has continuously marginalized black folk in this community, he's done that continuously, and I saw it firsthand, so I'm not telling you what I heard, what I know, and you all need to watch him, and he did the same thing on that park, parking authority, and end up giving work to a company that he represented, and any other place, that would be an ethics issue, somebody be going to jail, and so it's not right, it's not fair, you know, I know the rules don't apply to everybody, but, you know, to me, that's, that's egregious, that he would do that, but that's not the first time, but, you know, I don't have any connections in, in, in the state legislature, any of these other places like he does, but that's what happens, and we should be concerned that we don't have black representation when they are floating bonds and what have you over there, and I don't know who, who was the other person, I really don't, because I don't pay attention to it on that level, but I'm just saying, we are here, majority black council, those dollars should be representative of this community, and, and, you know, I'd go to my grave believing that, and that's what we should be conscientious about as we move forward, and I also think that we got to do something different. We've had two murders, we had a bunch of murders, and Council Hillier, you had one in your neighborhood yesterday, and, and the day before was in my neighborhood, at the spur, where we were talking about doing the, the entryway, the green space coming in there, and I'm saying, I've seen the police out. And I'm saying, I've seen the police out, but it's not consistent enough, because that's a main thoroughfare. Folks know they can go to Fairfield, because Fairfield don't have much coverage. They can go over the, the wild and go across the bridge and all this other stuff, because this, you know, has access to the freeway. And so I'm saying, we gotta do something different. And I know, because that's where I come home. You know, I don't come where they park the trucks anymore, because it's just embarrassing. I ain't want to invite nobody to my house, because we had to go past that, you know? And I'd use a different route to go home, because I don't want to come home every day and see this junk, this mess. And now on that, on that, on that street, you got the guy that's got trucks and, and everything parked out there, and, and, you know, and that's not fair to this community. And we need to send zoning out there again and shut it down, because I'm just here to tell you, it's, it's not right. I'm just one homeowner, but there are many homeowners. I have two homes in Bellevue Heights. And it's not right, you know? And none of us would want to come home to a community every day, and you're looking at these trucks, and they just park on city right away now. Mind you, city right away. And it's, it's not, it's not fair. It's just not fair, and it grieves me every day, I gotta come home and look at this mess. It does. And so if I'm excited about this green way, I am, because I think it lends us an opportunity to change the, the corridor, if that, if you will, of that area, because this is the main artery. It's how you come into Bellevue Heights. It's how you go to Brown and you go to other places, you know, and what have you. And so, you know, I'm just, I'm a little tired. And I just want, you know, to say to this council, we do need to put some more energy in the crossplex. The crossplex belongs to the city of Birmingham. It's not Stephen Horton's crossplex. It's the city of Birmingham crossplex, and we need it completed. So I'm depending on the, I'm gonna still be around, y'all, you know? I'll just be in a different capacity. But I'm just here to say that that's what I, you know, that's what we got to do as a, and, and I would say that about any place that we have started and not finished. We need to do that. You know, I was glad when, when, when I saw Hunter's Demolition Company destroying Bank School, you know? And I never see him in a hard hat, but anyway.
We're gonna do whatever it takes, Mr. Ward.
Yes, sir. And so, you know, we want to support that, and that's what we got to do, is learn to support one another, you know? When, when Council Alexander, Pro Tim Alexander, got her new shopping center and got her new eye place over there and, and all, and so I took my, my new daughter over there to get her glasses and what have you. So I'm just telling you, I, we support over there, and I haven't been to the Publix yet, but perhaps I will when I get a raise. But I'm getting that too, because I don't have to pay for my stuff anymore. But, but, but I'm just saying, I want us to concentrate on those areas, and we need help, and it takes all of us working together to get those things done. And whatever we can do for, for the eastern side, Council Woods, who doesn't have an opponent, isn't it awesome? Have mercy. It almost happened to me, but somebody qualified, I think, at 4 o'clock, and they were gonna close at 4:30. But anyway. But I, I think that's really wonderful, and, and so I wish you all well.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Council Horton, for that mention of our new business. Dr. Blue and her family were very proud. She's a UAB graduate, and so we're very excited to have that family business come to District Seven. And I also want to echo your sentiments about the parking on, and the trucks. We have similar situations like that in District Seven, where people or a mechanic is parking cars that have not been finished repair, and they're just parking them right there on the street. So I'm calling along with you, not only zoning, but our code enforcement. We've got code enforced, codes on the books that need to be enforced, and then we can deal with that as a zoning issue as well. So I thank you for bringing that up. As far as announcements for District Seven, we will have an in-person Utilities Committee meeting today at 2 o'clock. It will be streamed live on Facebook, and there's also the opportunity for any of our presenters, they will be provided with a web X link, so that they can use the raise hand motion or speak to an item that they will be presenting. We have neighborhood meetings at Industrial Center, Thursday, July 22nd, at 1:00 PM. I do want to make mention that we will be celebrating and we'll be out cleaning this weekend at our annual Love D7 Environmental Day. That'll be Saturday, July 24th. Registration for the cleanup will begin at 8:30. We'll actually start the cleanup from 9 till 11, and that's at 2341 Pearson Avenue Southwest. And that's actually the South Park Baptist Church there on Pearson Avenue. There'll be a recycling truck there, where you'll be able to bring your recyclables and used household items, that you'll be able to drop those off, and that will be from 10 to 12 noon. We have a lot of youth volunteers that are coming out, so just come on Saturday from 9 to 12, and help support and love D7. So we look forward to everyone being there. I also just wanted to mention that the New Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, they're having a youth explosion, and that's the week of July 19th and 22nd, starts at 6:30 every evening. And I want to thank Reverend Michael Mays there and his congregation at New Bethel for engaging our youth. Their theme is reboot, retake, and restore. So we want to encourage everyone to go out and attend those events. I want to end by thanking everyone who came out to help with the bookbag and giveaways for our D7 youth on Sunday at Hopewell Missionary Baptist Church. We had a lot of families to come out. We had games and great opportunity to get our students ready for the new school year. So I thank the Southwest Alliance and all of those supporters who came to assist with that. And that ends my thank you, Doc.
Okay.
Dr. Parker.
Dr. Parker, yeah. Anyway, thank you all. Real quick, couple of announcements. I think we will, I think you all have received some communication from the mayor's office. If you all could make sure you all communicate back and, and set up, respond back to those requests. I would appreciate that. The other thing...
Is it something in the email or something?
I'll check if it was, if it, if it went out in email, or will be going out.
Can you tell us? Because I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I, we'll, we'll, we'll finish it up. Yeah, I'll send it out. We'll send it out. Let me get all the information, and then we'll send it out. I'm just saying, just, just...
But you just made an announcement, and I...
As, as it relates to, as it relates to some potential funding opportunities moving forward, so meeting with some of the plant engineering staff. So that's what we're doing. So anyway, with that, also, vaccinations, be at Legion Field tomorrow from 10 till 6, and also there'll be, if you get a vaccination, there will be tickets available for the concert August 8th for People of Bryson, and so the promoters may, tickets available, so if you come get a shot, you can, you will be able to receive a ticket for that concert. So anyway, with that, Council Williams.
I'll in favor, let it be known, my singer. All opposed. This is true, love.